I'd like to call to order the April 21st, 2025, Wilson County Commission Meeting to order tonight. Thank you for all of you being here and thanks to the guests that are here and hope you come back and join us any opportunity that you have. At this time, I'll introduce Commissioner Bobby Franklin for the prayer and the pledge for tonight.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners, guests, both here and at home, thanks for coming. Hope everybody had a great Easter. If you're like me, you might still be digesting food because everybody in my household and all my family brought carbohydrates. I want to introduce Wes Wilson, pastor, to do the blessing tonight and offer the blessing. And Pastor Groover, would you come on up? I have to go back about 25 years for working with him. You have him to blame probably for me being here because he kept me from being killed many times in all of the stressful meetings when Mount Juliet was dealing with a hurricane of growth back in the early 2000s. And I can tell you, it's always good to have wise counsel and look to people who will give you the recommendation, take a breath, go home, get a night's sleep, and come back, and let's try to all be friends 25 years from now. So I'm going to ask him to offer the blessing and I'll leave the pledge.
Please rise. Please rise.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer tonight. Heavenly Father, as we gather here this evening, we thank you that we have a very special place to call home, and we're grateful that those who are in this room tonight have committed themselves to continue the heritage that Wilson County has provided over the many years that it has been a part of making a good place for all to live. We thank you for the commitment that these who serve us have made to make the sacrifices that are necessary, to take the risk that are needed to be able to make decisions that will empower us to move forward in the days to come. We recognize that there are challenging decisions that must be considered and ultimately made as we face the future. We pray and ask for your wisdom and your guidance. We pray for the courage to be able to make the decisions that are necessary so that all people will have an opportunity to recognize that they are welcomed here. We thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy. We thank you for the protection that we know and those who provide protection and care for us in great time of need. We pray for our neighbors around the state who are still dealing with the aftermath of weather conditions and storms and other events that have caused them travail in their life. But we are grateful tonight that together we can do more than we can apart. And we pray for the unity of heart, mind, and spirit as we move forward in your calling to minister to one another, to love our neighbor as ourself, and to continue to lift up the name of the one who gives all these gifts to us. And it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Please go ahead and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you both. At this time, if you will, press presence on your panel to record your presence tonight's meeting. Twenty-five and oh. At this time, we'll have public comment period. This is not the public comment time for the rezoning tonight on the lot sizes, but if you have any other reason you'd like to speak before the county commission tonight, this would be your opportunity to step forward, state your name and address for the record, and address the commission. Seeing no one, we will close public comment period and we'll move on to a report from the steering committee. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The steering committee met on regular session on Thursday, April 10th, in the upstairs conference room. That needs to be noted as a change in the minutes. It says the county commission room, it was a conference room, but I'm moved that they be received and filed.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion from anybody? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Adoption of the agenda. Commissioner Fields?
Everyone has a copy of the agenda. I would make a notation that Resolution 4-13 would be pulled tonight. That was a special recognition on my part, and the family had a conflict, and they will not be here until next month. So, but I would make that amended motion that you receive and file it.
Got a motion and a second on the amended motion. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have a consent agenda. We have five items that we need to approve.
Those be a vote. Okay.
One vote.
I got a motion. Do I hear a second? And then we'll need to vote on the screen. So if you are ready, please cast your vote. Commissioner Rich, all hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five and oh. Amendment agenda passes. At this time, special recognition, Commissioner Bernard and Commissioner Smith. If you'll come forward, please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
At this time, we'd like to bring up the EMA Committee and also Director Cooper and Sheriff. Y'all would like to come up and join us? We wanted to honor our telecommunication, our dispatchers. If anybody's here, would they like to come up here? We'd like to recognize them. Thank y'all for coming. I'm going to get Mrs. Bries to read a resolution tonight.
Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee honoring all public safety telecommunicators in Wilson County, including Wilson County Emergency Management Agency dispatchers, Wilson County Sheriff's Department dispatchers, and Wilson County 911 dispatchers for their service. Whereas the Wilson County Emergency Management Agency, Sheriff's Office, and Wilson 911, along with city agencies proudly serve the citizens of Wilson County. And whereas these organizations are committed to providing highly trained telecommunicators and dispatchers, also known as public safety telecommunicators, to answer emergency calls in Wilson County. And whereas they are the link between people calling for help in an emergency situation and the emergency response agencies who arrive on the scene. And whereas public safety telecommunicators use their specialized training and skills to gather vital information and make split-second decisions to form the foundation of an effective emergency response, prevent the worsening of a situation, provide situational awareness to responders, and/or provide life-saving direction. And whereas these telecommunicators are the true backbone of the swift emergency response provided by the agencies in Wilson County. And whereas public safety telecommunicators work in a uniquely stressful environment, communicating with people in great distress, harm, fear, or injury, and that environment can have an adverse emotional and physical impact, acknowledging that PTSD and vicarious trauma are real issues in the 911 profession. And whereas public safety telecommunicators hold strong the thin gold line, providing selfless compassionate care to all who seek their assistance during good times and bad. And whereas the second week of April is annally recognized as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. And whereas the Wilson County Commission recognizes the unending service of public safety telecommunicators who answer 911 calls on a daily basis. And now therefore be it resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Wilson County, Tennessee, that we recognize and honor all 40-plus public safety telecommunicators in Wilson County, including the Wilson County Emergency Management Agency dispatchers, Wilson County Sheriff's Department dispatchers, and Wilson County 911 dispatchers.
Your motion to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Y'all want to introduce yourself?
Bobby Hale with the Wilson County Sheriff's Office.
I'm Missy Spears with Wilson EMA.
Thank you all. Appreciate you.
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for what you do. Thanks to the EMA Committee for making that happen as well. This time, we have a public hearing tonight on a rezoning request. I hear a motion to go out of session for a public hearing. Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Christopher, if you will, guide us through this.
A public hearing will be held before the Wilson County Commission on Monday, April 21st, 2025, at 7:00 PM or thereafter in the county commission room of the Wilson County Courthouse located at 228 East Main Street, Lebanon, Tennessee, to hear comments on the following. The resolution amending the lot size within the A1 agricultural zone district within the Wilson County zoning ordinance. A copy of this request is on file in the Wilson County Plan Office located at 228 East Main Street, Lebanon, Tennessee, and is available for inspection during regular business hours. Anyone desiring to comment on this is requested to attend.
At this time, if you wish to speak about the lot zone size reduction, if you will, step forward to the podium in the back, state your name and address for the record, and you will have a three-minute time limit. Anyone wishing to speak at this time, if you would come forward.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. My name is Perry Neal, 1000, Murphy Lane. I keep this very brief. I like the larger lot size at 80,000. I feel like that for the people, the majority of the people that live in A1 District, that's what they want. I just felt like you got it right the first time when you went to 80,000, so let's just leave it there. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Next?
Derek Dodson, 106, Chapman Drive. On February 21st, I attended the planning commission meeting whereby at this microphone, I stated that I didn't have a position on this and that I would like to hear a case made for the change in lot size. The three of the things that I learned at that meeting were, one, no one attempted to make a case for this change at that planning commission meeting. Second thing I learned was that the best interest of the county and that of Water and Wastewater Authority is not always in sync. A major discussion played out with regard to water and wastewater authority issues regarding this issue. And the third thing I learned was, after listening to all the discussion at that meeting, which was a long discussion, was that I'm hell-bent against this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the commission. Jack Pratt, 1145, Grant Road. I want to echo Brother Neal's comments back there. We like the larger lot sizes, and I think that's in the best interest of the county. I know y'all have got a lot of decisions ahead of you. I know you've had a lot that's brought this about. You know, you all are genuine leaders, each and every one of you. The people elected you to be that, and you are truly that. And speaking with that, I know that y'all, you know, raised this lot size a couple of years ago, if I'm not mistaken. But I'll quote Dr. Martin Luther King. "A genuine leader does not search for consensus but molds it." And I feel that that's what y'all have done, and I'd wish you'd leave it at the two acres. Thank you.
Thank you. Next? Anyone else want to speak on the issue? Okay.
My name's Michael Swope, 1412 Holloway Road. I just feel like folks that live in agricultural areas, we like to take responsibility for ourselves. I know the argument is about drinking water and making sure that we've got clean drinking water. And I'd just say that for those of us that live in rural areas, we just assume filter our water if we've got a problem with our water. So if you'd leave it at 80,000 square foot, that'd be nice with me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
I'm Ken Young. I've lived on Shop Springs Road in A1 for 20 years. I operated a large desert ranch in New Mexico that relied on sophisticated systems for drinking water. It had both aerobic and anaerobic septic systems. In a booklet on your desk, it looks like this, you have the memorandum created by the executive director of our water authority. He used it to influence votes of the planning commission and of your planning and zoning committee. His argument is that smaller lot sizes will provide incentives for developers to use step systems and to make it easier for him to provide water. Before you decide to not, please hear what was left out of his report and testimony. Consider just three questions. If the water authority regards safe water as an imperative, then why has TDEC drafted enforcement orders against it for failing to correct hazardous water lines in Ms. Bowman and Mr. Scruggs' districts? Mr. Lieber failed to report, at the time he spoke to your committees, he knew the state promised legal action for its continued delay. If the water authority is concerned about diminished water quality created by slow turnover, then why did TDEC have to order it to correct this exact problem in Mr. Hall's Statesville Road storage tank? Mr. Lieber failed to report that preventing stale water is not difficult and is not expensive. And lastly, if the water authority believes step systems are quoting Mr. Lieber overall great, then why are Mr. Glover and Mr. Hobbs' constituents complaining about them? And why do state inspectors find so many problems with them? Mr. Lieber did not report that the cedar growth system has had decades-long problems, and the Highlands at Popular Ridge has so many serious problems that just four days ago, TDEC moved to revise its operating permit. In summary, the water authority is advocating for smaller lot size based on safe water concerns at the same time they have not repaired existing hazardous water lines in A1. The water authority complains about the cost of supplying high-quality water to remote areas at the same time they have wasted millions of dollars in ARP grant funding that you gave them for this very purpose. The water authority advocates for troublesome step systems but won't compare their failure rates to the failure rates of legally constructed individual systems. And importantly, the water authority's governing body is now under investigation by the Tennessee Board of Utility Regulation for questions about all their statutory and regulatory compliance. Reducing lot sizes in A1 is a very consequential decision. Smaller lots are a great thing, only if you're a developer selling step systems. But it's a terrible way to manage growth in A1. It is not in the county's best interest. It is not in your constituents' best interest, nor is it in your voters' best interest. Vote no on this proposal.
Next? Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll close public comment period, and we'll take a motion to go back into session.
Move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Christopher?
We can hear this one now. If you want to do that and go on and move Resolution 25-4-7 up now, if you want to do that after you ask any questions you'd like to, to Christopher, she'll come back to the podium. So if you want to address that, you'll make a motion now. If you don't, we'll address it when we come to the resolutions. Any questions for Christopher? From anybody?
Well, I've got one. So is this...
Do you want me to just go through the whole process real quick?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Dowell, and I think a few others, I think he's just the face of this, has asked me to go through the process on this resolution. This resolution started in the planning and zoning committee. I was directed to find some middle ground from where A1 was to what it currently is now at the 80,000 square feet. I made that, I just took a literal middle ground at that point. I presented the resolution to the planning commission on April 21st, I believe, March. Thank you. There's a lot of dates nowadays. March, there was discussion on that. They made a motion. It was 7-4-2 against for a negative recommendation at that time, and I misspoke when I presented it to the planning and zoning committee, but they were the recommending body back to the planning and zoning committee. So they had made a negative recommendation to the planning and zoning committee. I presented that proposal to them, that it was a negative recommendation. They did not want to change anything in the current resolution as the planning commission's direction. The planning and zoning committee had to consider that, and now the resolution is being forwarded to you as presented originally at the 60,000 square feet because there was no recommendation for any amendments as to what was presented at planning commission that March, on that March deadline. So what is in front of you today, what you will be voting on if you approve it, is to amend the A1 Zone District from 80,000 square feet back to 60,000 square feet. That's the only thing that is currently on the table unless there's an amendment on the floor. Is there any other questions on the process? Does that clean it up?
I don't have any questions, but just talking to everybody else around here, would you run the list on the eighth and a half or two?
Just think about that when you vote.
Not asking me that?
No.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments, and would you like to move on this resolution today? Commissioner McFarland?
Chris, you say a negative recommendation. They did not have a recommendation, or they...
There was a lot of discussion.
There was discussion.
There was, I presented it to planning and zoning as no recommendation. Their actual motion was a negative recommendation of the resolution in front of them.
What was the reason?
They did not want to change it. Well, their main reason is they did not want the change in the first place back in 2023. So at this point, they just did not want to issue a recommendation on the change back to 60,000 square feet was their main reason at that time. So they just didn't feel that their recommendation was going to hold any weight at this time on this resolution.
Any other questions or comments, or what's the pleasure of the group on this resolution? Do it now. Commissioner Gentry?
I have a question. So 60,000, 80,000, is there a limit as far as how much they can cover the land? It's something with a house or a garage or something like that. There's a...
Yeah, we have a...
There are limits.
Yeah, we have a limit. In A1, there's a 30% lot coverage rule. So I mean, you're looking on a 60,000 square foot lot minimum, that'd be a 20,000 roughly square foot house.
You could have a larger house on the 80,000.
If anybody's getting to those sizes, yeah, absolutely.
Commissioner Franklin?
Yeah, I have a question. In committee, I was under the impression that this had no recommendation from the planning commission. At best, should this just be deferred? I mean, I don't know that I'd have made the motion or voted this way having known that, but I didn't at the time. So my question is, should this be a do-over just based on we were not represented with the proper action by the county planning commission? Yeah, I'm going to make a motion to defer one month.
Any other discussions or questions? Any other questions? Comment. Commissioner Hall?
I'm just going to say I'd like to go ahead and take a vote on it. I'd like to kill it and vote no, to be honest with you. The people of District 9 have spoken with me, and the vast majority of people who have spoken with me about this are totally against this change. I have the most A1 to my calculation. I've looked at a map of it. I've got the most A1 in the entire county in my district, in fact, with the exception of the city of Watertown. It's all A1. And so the people of A1, they don't want us to change this. I'd like to go ahead and take a vote on this and vote no on this.
Mr. Glover? So you got to defer and a second on the floor. So if you defer it, it stays away until somebody decides to bring it back, is my understanding?
What I heard was a motion to defer for one month.
One month. So you come back next month.
He's got an amendment.
I got an amendment to the motion to table it indefinitely. Do you accept that amendment, Mr. Frank?
Yes.
Okay. So I got a resolution on the floor to defer and amend to table it. Yes?
Table it, that means forever?
It means until you vote to bring it off the table, and there's some certain rules you've got to follow to do that.
Yeah.
You can do that or remain at 80,000.
Correct.
You will.
Yes. Motion and second. Any other discussion? Anybody? You got a motion and a second to defer and table it until you bring it back. All in favor, say aye.
Motion is to table it indefinitely. The guy that made the motion to defer accepted.
Got you. So we just going to defer.
Motion to table indefinitely.
So I got a motion to defer, no table, I mean, motion to table, no defer at all. Everybody clear? I am. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Guess we'll do a roll call vote?
Give me a second.
Okay.
If you vote yes, you're tabling, is that correct?
Yes. Vote yes, you're tabling the resolution. If you vote no, we'll bring it back up.
If you table it, remain at 80,000, correct?
Yes, sir. Ready? If you're ready to vote, please cast your vote. Voting yes to table it or vote no to bring it back up. Commissioner Scruggs? All hearts and minds good with your vote. Please record.
Thirteen yes.
So resolution is tabled. Okay. Thank you. We'll move forward. Reports of amendments, committee. Commissioner Fields?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The committee was scheduled to meet on Thursday, April 10th. It was not informed, so we did not make, we did make... There was not a form, so we did not make, we did make...
Tonight at 6:45. The minutes are correct. There were no corrections to be made, so I'll make a motion to receive those and file them as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Reading of the minutes?
Most discussion...
All in favor, say aye. Just to mention tonight that we had Mr. Terry Gray to be on the Laguardia Utility District. There's no action needed on your part. I just need to make a mention of that and have that in the record book. If I can at this time, I'll ask Ms. Regina Gerton to come forward. Regina is with Volunteer Network, and she wants just a few minutes of your time to not let you know what that is and how it's important to you as a county commissioner. Regina?
Thank you, Mayor Hutto, and thank you, commissioners, for allowing us to be with you this evening. My name's Regina Gerton. I'm the executive director of Volunteer Network, and this is my co-partner in crime, Jamie Tyner, the associate director of Volunteer Network. We are a newer nonprofit to Wilson County that was birthed out of the March 2020 tornadoes. We provide an online platform for organizations in our county to post their volunteer needs, and then the greater Wilson County community to be able to sign up for those needs. Additionally, we partner with Wilson Emergency Management Agency and our first responders in times of disaster to provide volunteer management and to be the funnel for those volunteers when invited to do so. Volunteer Network is one very small piece of the puzzle, however, when our community experiences a disaster, there's long-term recovery that occurs from those moments. And many of you commissioners, we've worked alongside when your areas, your precincts, have been affected. Commissioner Chandler and I have, and Jamie have worked closely together through Mount Juliet Police Department, and Commissioner Breeze and I have also worked very closely together, too. I am reaching, we're wanting to extend an arm of invitation to you as commissioners to meet together, to be able to share more about an initiative that we've created called Volunteer Organizations Active in Disaster. We've propped up the Wilson County chapter of that. It's a nationwide structure that connects natural disaster relief organizations to one another to be able to work collaboratively, cooperatively, to be able to communicate together, and that way, we're able to serve our community members as a county when we experience disaster in an equitable way and in an efficient way. Something that we have learned now, having walked through a handful of incidences over the last five years, is that when that incident occurs, it's a little bit more in front of your face that we need to be able to work together. And so we're wanting to take a proactive approach and say, we would love to go to lunch with you. We would love to go to coffee with you. We would love to share more about how you as commissioners can be advocates for your residents in advance of a disaster. And then I'd love to chat with you about how we can educate the people within your community about where to turn in times of disaster, and then also how they, as local community leaders, can connect with us within VOAD so that we can prepare in advance and be set up for so much more success than we were even back in March of 2020 to be able to serve our community members well. I'm going to be sharing, Mayor Hutto has my information that he said we can share in the meeting notes so that you all can reach out to us directly to be able to schedule those times to get together. We have an office space over at the Mill here, or there are a plethora of local coffee shops in the area that I would love to be able to sit down with you and share more. We also have some flyers as well that I'll pass off to Mayor Hutto to be able to pass off to you guys, too, that has some more information on quarterly meetings that you can attend to to learn more. Those happen over at the Lebanon-Wilson County Chamber. And at this time, I'd like to defer any remaining time to any questions that you all may have. And again, Mayor Hutto, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come today.
Let me give you just a brief introduction to, Regina used to be a pastor at Providence Church, and she left her job to help with this, as well as Jamie did the same thing. And back when the tornado happened, if you remember, we had tons of volunteers, but the organizational piece of that was, that was the piece that we're missing. And we had two different groups, and so she helped form what is a cohesive effort right now, so that when we have straight-line winds, just like we had here this other day when we had the, I think it's EF1 that came through, you know, she can help organize that, so when you have constituents calling you saying, I need this, this, and this, that's who we connect it to, and that's what she's done to create that, her and Jamie both. And they work well with EMA. They're not out there on their own, they're not getting their neck out where they don't need to be. And so we appreciate that, and we appreciate your work to do this, because it's, there's many things that we need help with volunteers on, not just disasters and not just straight-line winds, but many other things, and we can rely on them now and very thankful for what you've done and understand you're trying to get with them and to have some conversation. Any questions? Commissioner Breeze is on my card here.
I don't really have a question, just some clarification and a big, huge thank you to these ladies. My district got hit by a tornado in December of 2021, and the mayor put me in touch with Regina and Jamie, and between the two of them, they helped me coordinate, well, they coordinated, I coordinated with people who lived in my district, and they got national organizations on the ground to come help these people clean up their yards and giant trees. One thing I've learned is that unfortunately, if a tree doesn't hit your house, then your home insurance is not going to take care of it, at which point, you suddenly have to try to figure out, how do you deal with 200-year-old oak trees that are down in your yard? And these ladies here really helped out in my area. So if you ever get hit with anything like that, knock wood, you don't, I've been through it three times so far, they are huge help, so please make sure you keep their names and numbers close, because they're a great resource, and I'm very thankful they're here in Wilson County to help us out.
Anything else? Anybody? I will get your information to them, and if you will hand those stuff back to Commissioner Rich out there, he will take care of that for you. Thank you, sir, for doing that. Thank you again, Regina and Jamie, for being here tonight. This time, Mr. Goodall, any notary to be added to the list? We're all good. I hear a motion to approve the notary list.
Move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Judicial Commissioner Director at this time, I'll turn the floor to Mr. John Gentry.
Thank you, Mayor. We interviewed over 14 people for the director position. It was a three-day operation, it was very interesting, very highly qualified people applied. We're very fortunate. I want to thank, before I make a motion for the one we chose, I want to thank Stacy Swindell. She operated in that position for almost 10 months, and we do appreciate her service, and she continues to serve. Now, I want to make a motion now that we nominate, we want to nominate Cory Bueller for a one-year director position. At this time, the committee voted for him over the other 14.
Second.
I got a motion, not necessarily, I got a second, that's good. Any other comments or questions? No other nominees? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record reflect is unanimous. Mr. Bueller is in the back. Congratulations, Mr. Bueller. We will miss you as a part of our family here, but we wish you well in your career as you move upward. Thank you for your service here. Report from Emergency Management Committee, Commissioner Bernard?
EMA met Monday, April 14th at 5:30. The chair is in the conference room.
In your packet, I moved, they'll be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Emergency Management Director's report, Director Cooper. Hello, Ms. Bueller. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commission. This month, we're about 150 calls up from last month. We've been very busy this month with trainings and exercises, also meetings with VOAD and Volunteer Network. We also, in addition to actual disasters, the warm and shelter that we do, we partner with them, getting volunteers to help and things like that. And then we endeavored into a safe shelter during tornado watches, and that turned out very good. We had 73 occupants there during the watch phase, so that's something that we'll probably continue doing and partnering with them on that. We're looking at expanding, this one was open in Lebanon for this particular event, and we're looking at opening one up, trying to, at least one in each city. So we are working on that right now, on establishing those locations. Outside of that, I do want to thank our dispatchers for what they do. They're always that first line of defense when they answer that phone. You know, they don't know what they're going to get when they answer that. So their job is just as stressful as the ones that respond. So just think about them and the benefit to the county that they provide. So other than that, that concludes my report, unless there's any questions.
Any discussion? I will thank you for the documents that you put out about the tornado that came through and all the damage there. Thank you for all that you have to do that people don't realize on documenting all of that. Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And report from Law Enforcement Committee, Commissioner Kurtz?
Law Enforcement Committee met at 5:00 PM on April 17th. The units were quickly prepared, they're on your desk. I'm moving to have you receive and file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sheriff's report, Sheriff Robert Bryan.
Thank you, Mayor, County Commission. Your report's in your packet. The numbers are all across the border, pretty much up this month from last month. Just calls for service are up over 800 over the past month. So a couple of things, I mean, it's getting warmer, more people out and about, and we'll see an increase throughout the summer, I'm sure. Excuse me, I just lost Cory as an employee. I'm...
He choked out.
Do y'all know what y'all did?
The brakes and the blinders.
We're also busy this time of year, throughout the year, in training. We'll reach up, them activities will increase throughout the year. So, and we had a lot of trainers. Last month, I mentioned the training at Friendship Christian School and exercise. It was a success. Each time we have one of them training, we learn more and try to better ourselves every time, so it was a success. The, I also want to thank our dispatchers, our 911 call-takers, WEMA dispatchers. And listen, that's not only the lifeline of the people that's calling in, it's the lifeline of these officers that's on the other side of that radio. I've pretty much done everything in law enforcement over my career, but I never could dis, I don't think I could ever dispatch, because it's so difficult and it's really, but they're saving lives, just like the people out here on the road. So I really appreciate, and it's well-deserved to recognize them tonight, so thank y'all. Unless there's any question, that concludes my report.
Motion approved, say aye. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Sheriff Bryan. Report from Education Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Education Committee met at 8:10. The minute's in your packet. I moved, they'll be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Report from Director of Schools, report, Mr. Jeff Luttrell.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioner. You also have my report in front of you, it does include update enrollment as of 3/18. Also, just gave you some information on a staffing formula we'll be using moving forward. We'll do some cleanup, make sure we bring on new schools, and over time, some of our staffing, we felt like had got a little out of hand a little bit. So we are making permanent staffing formula, have brought forth, and will be some adjustments to current staff, so you may be hearing that, but it will pay dividends from a funding perspective from here on out. I'd like to congratulate Springdale Elementary ESL teacher, Sharice Carter. She was selected 2425 Wilson County Teacher of the Year. That program, of course, is sponsored by WP Bone, Wilson County Motors, Bob McDonald, President Cedarstone Bank, along with Cumberland University. It's a great event. We're honored to celebrate with her for being County Teacher of the Year. Also, we're proud of all of our Teacher of the Year candidates, and so it was a good night, and just get an opportunity to see some of those folks, please congratulate him as well. Also, Keisha Cohen, Health School Service Manager, was one of three finalists out of 140 school districts in the state to receive the State Award of Excellence in Health Services. We're proud of that, we're proud of our nursing program, and what we do with providing nurses in each school. You do have the graduation dates also. Starts May 13th. Got one on May 15th, May 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, and so it'll be a busy time, but did want to give you those dates. Construction projects update, Laguardo, you have latest report, it's moving right along. Also, Central Pike starting to come out of the ground, if you've been by there lately. Included in my report is also last board meeting minutes. Finally, two things I think will be of note for you. I do want to take the time, see Mr. Lakeman back there with Lebanon High Schools at Criminal Justice Class. He does this on an annual basis, just to, they're here to learn more about this part of government and funding mechanism, and so thank him for doing that, and thank his students for being here with us as well. Appreciate them. Finally, I do have a phone call, just a phone call, nothing in writing, from FEMA. Are expecting our $17 million to be awarded. It's not official, it's waiting one more signature, but they called last week, and I told you I'd keep you informed on that. So that $17 million, we didn't have, and we started this process. So don't have it yet, but I know, I know we're looking for it. I'm looking for it every day, as I know you are, too. But just wanted to give you a report on that. I will take on any questions.
Air motion to approve the report?
Some of them.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Register of Deeds report, Ms. Murphy's got one in your packet, I'll hear a motion to approve those.
Move.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees report is in your packet. Mr. Hackett is here. Would you like to speak, Mr. Hackett? All right. Mr. Hackett will come forward this time with the trustees' report.
Mr. Nurse? So I've got a few numbers for you here, from the period October 1 through March 31st. Total real property and personal property bill for the tax year 2023, it's $144,169,952. The amount paid was $139,719,643. The amount to be collected, $4,450,309. That leaves a percentage paid of 96.91%. For '24, the amount billed is $144,624,694. The amount paid is $142,191,606. To be collected, $2,433,088. The percentage paid on that is 98.32%. On the CDs, we currently have a balance of $106,475,324. We just bid two weeks ago that were held by Wilson Bank and Trust, $10 million each. We were able to get 4.4% on those CDs. We did invite other banks to bid. We had nine banks bid on this process, and next time, we'll have 10 coming up next month. The reconciled cash balance as of 3/31/25, Pinnacle checking the money market is $186,946,70. The American Rescue Plan of 2021 is $12,488,962. The LGIP trustees' fund is $30,822, I'm sorry, $30,822,870, with a total of $230,257,902. As of today, we bid the rates on the checking accounts at Pinnacle Bank. We were able to get those rates raised from 3.1% to 3.5 on the operating account and on the money market from 3.25 to 3.75. That concludes my report.
Got a motion and second. Any discussion or questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for being here, Mr. Hackett. Roads Superintendent report, Mr. Steve Murphy.
Yes, Mr. Dowell, I'm here. Plans was to start our paving today, but Mother Nature had other choices, so we're planning on starting it this week, as long as the weather permits. Our side mount, Moan... Our side mowers, mowers have started mowing this week. So you'll see them out running around if they can keep from getting run over. So doing our patchwork, our general maintenance, which all the weather we had, you know, it had a lot of drains and stuff, and bridges stopped up. So we've been working on them, trying to get them opened up, cleared. That concludes my report.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Ag Center report, Mr. Josh Major.
New business. I can do it during new business. Yeah, he's out there, yeah.
Thank, thank, thank you. I just want to go, go over kind of what we have going on out there at the Ag Center. I don't know if anyone saw in the paper, but in the Wilson Post, Ken Beck, he did an article over the, about the Reese Brothers mule, mule business that's been in business for many, many generations. But they will be having their annual mule sale coming up this Saturday. This is the riding mules that will be, is the event that will be taking place this Saturday. But then as far as the other things that we have going on, of course, we have the Cumberland University rain date that will be on May the 3rd, if it is inclement weather, where they'll have, where they'll have their ceremonies out there. And then, of course, the first week of May will be the Farm Days event where all the second grade students from the county schools and the city schools will all be there, you know, out there getting, getting educated, you know, about multiple facets of agriculture, everything from Mark Powell's always out there sharing a sheep. And there's a multitude of animals there where, you know, a lot of kids who are never exposed to anything like that have the opportunity to, to do that. And that, May will also wind up our season for the Little Bridges Rodeo. The event in May will be the one, the last one before they qualify to, to go to the Nationals. And we have another barbecue competition coming up on May, May the 23rd through the 25th. And then June kind of, kind of puts us over into cattle, cattle showing season. We got the Angus Preview Show and the, the National Galvey Junior Show will be, will be with us the, the third week of, of June. So we're looking forward to that. That will, that will be, be, be a very big draw there. And then we'll have the Tennessee Beef Expo coming up. And one of the big, big events that we'll have back this year, which in 2019, we had the BMW Motorcycles of America Rally out at the Ag Center. And they are, that group will be back again with us again in June. And we're looking forward to, to having them, them back. They were, they were a great group when they were there last time. So we're, you know, we like to see the, you know, the repeat business for, you know, especially for an organization that size to, to come back and be with us again. And then the other thing that I would like to touch on, which I know everybody that's on the Ag Management Committee already knows this, but the first week of March, I went up to the FFA convention and the Ward Ag Center was honored as a Volunteer of the Year award. And, you know, I just want to say, you know, thank you to all you guys and of course, all the people who were sitting in your seats for the 50 years that the Ward Ag Center's been in existence. You know, I had a opportunity to be at a meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I got in a conversation with a guy that I'd never met before, who was, he was from a former, he was a member of the state legislature back a couple of decades ago. And, you know, and he hadn't been out there in, in many, many years, and he just said, wow. He said, I cannot believe, you know, what, what, what you guys have here. He said, there's not, there's not anything like this, you know, anywhere else in the state. And, you know, and I just, you know, that, you know, and I firmly believe that, you know, we definitely have something special there. But that's, you know, that concludes my report unless anyone has any questions.
All right. Are you, you want, you want to be on that? I was expecting for Blake to hit me up last year, you know, that's what, you know, he was the one.
I got, I got a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I may, I may be wrong, but Quinn Smith, Blake Quinn Smith, them mules got out one time and he was pretty upset, so make sure they don't get out.
I'll do my best.
Any other, any other constructive comments from Mr. Major? We do appreciate the job that you do, Mr. Major. You do a good job. All in favor say aye. Anybody here from the expo tonight to talk? I didn't see anybody. Port from Public Buildings Committee, Commissioner Weathers.
Were on your desk, so move, they've received a file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Ag Center management report, Commissioner Scruggs.
Ag Center manager, March 6th, completing file.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Animal control, Commissioner Breeze.
Animal control met on Thursday, April 10th at 5:00 PM in the upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet, I'm moving to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Audit, Commissioner Glover.
Audit met on Tuesday, March 18th, 5:00 PM upstairs in the conference room. We have a really good audit. We had two findings. They kind of, they were taken care of fairly quick and they said it wasn't going to happen again. But everything was good. Please be received and filed.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Broadband access, Commissioner Franklin.
Yes, broadband cable TV committee met on Tuesday, April 8th, upstairs conference room. Minutes in your packet, I'm moving to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Developing tourism, Commissioner Brown.
Well, tourism committee met on Wednesday, April 2nd, and again on Monday, April 14th. One was in your packet, one was on your desk, I'm moving to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Ethics, Commissioner Dow. Finance, Commissioner Costley. Health and Recreation, Commissioner Smith.
Our committee met on April 15th and 16th, 5:00 PM here in the committee commission room. Then it should be on your desk, I'm moving to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Insurance, Commissioner McFarland. Judicial, Commissioner Gentry.
Judicial met on March 27th, April 1st. April 16th, we also met there to be, to make a motion and receive the file.
Got a motion in second, three sets. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Legislative ad hoc, Commissioner Costley. Planning zoning, Commissioner McFarland.
Planning zoning met on March 27th at 5:00. Also on April the 8th at 5:00 upstairs conference room. Moves to be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Rules, Commissioner Keith. Urban type facility board, Commissioner Scruggs.
Urban type facility board met April 3rd. Minutes in your packet, they're received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Finance director report, Mr. Aaron Maynard. I will say, Ms. Gail texted me and reminded me that she was gone on a conference and she'd already asked about being gone. She'll report next month. Got to love text messages. Commissioner Glover.
We have three people back here, red four, a minute ago with Luke Shook Wilson.
Like to welcome them here. Best class ever.
Best class ever? And we get, when we get to new business tonight, I would like the criminal justice class to maybe stand up and let us know who you are. So we'll do that towards the end of the meeting if that's great, okay? Mr. Maynard.
Excuse me, passed out a report tonight before the meeting started, and first thing I want to do is apologize, because I looked at two or three different ways to present this information. This is the way I settled on late, and I realized too late to change it. My revenues don't line up across the board. So by the time you get to after 40330 wholesale beer tax, things stop lining up. So I apologize, but for purposes of what we're doing, this will work just fine, and I'll try to get you a corrected copy. What I really want to talk about more than anything is on the, the last page. The highlighted numbers, the $10,408,907.23, that, even though it's in parentheses, that is a profit, okay? That's where you were at this point in March of 2024. You were at a profit of a little over $10 million. You ended the year, by the way, at $1.2 million. To let you know that basically you're at property tax level coming in, and then over the next three months, things start to fade because we don't have the revenue coming in to cover the monthly expenditures. Over on the right side, you'll see it says fiscal year to date through March 2025, you are at 7.8, let's call it 7.9 million in profit. So you're down 2.5 million from where you were a year ago. Now, part of that's planned. If you remember, we had a motion on the floor to do a 3% bonus. That was 1.5 million roughly. It actually turned out to be $1,481,494. And that was planned to come out of fund balance. So that part, at this point, we're $1,032,000 behind where we were at this point last year. So I say all that to say, you know, it's just something that we need to be aware of as we, as we look at different spending things, that basically, we, we do have moves we can make. I'm not up here being doom and gloom. I'm not telling you basically that the sky's falling, but I am telling you that basically a 1% difference on a $100 million budget is a million dollars. So if our projections are off by 1%, that's a million dollars. Okay? And if I get within 3%, I think that's pretty good. So I just need us to be aware of where things stand, because again, I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't do that. So that is my report for the evening unless you have any questions for me.
Any discussion from anybody? All in favor say aye. Thank you, Mr. Major. Report from Budget Committee, Commissioner Marlowe.
Budget committee met March 25th and April 10th in the conference room. Minutes in your packet, move that be received and filed.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Resolution 25-4-8. I'm in the Budget Appropriation Resolution by approving a one-time Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 25-11.
Got a motion in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-4-9. To amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution by approving a one-time Wilson County Board of Education Budget Amendment 25-12.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-4-10. To amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from Ag Center Fund 124 to Ag Center.
Any discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
25 and 0.
25 and 0, resolution passes.
Resolution 25-4-11. To amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from Highway Public Works Fund 131 to Road Commission.
Discussion? Seeing none, are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Commissioner, all hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record.
24, yes, one abstaining.
Resolution passes.
Resolution 25-4-12. Amend the Budget Appropriation Resolution to make an appropriation from Ag Center Fund 124 to Ag Center.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in, oh, no, never mind. I forget that. Are you ready to vote? Please cast your vote. Jump in the gun. All hearts and minds good with your vote? Please record. 25 and 0, resolution passes. We get to old business. Anybody on new business? If I could get the criminal justice class to stand up right quick and just tell us your name, starting with the teacher.
My name is Jamie Lunt. Been with us a teacher eleven years, over 16 years, and it's our 14th year of student commission to see what they do.
Thank you.
My name is Audrey Brown. I've been serving at the Allen State.
My name is Iowa Williams. I'm a senior manager. I'm a student. I'm a parent. I'm a resident. 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 I'm a resident.
Again, thank y'all all for being here tonight. We appreciate that so much. Thank you. Have my leadership Wilson group in the back. Would you mind standing and just say, tell us who you are? Including the little man.
I'm George Schruck. I'm with Cumberland University.
I'm Tim Thomas. I am not a little guy.
I'm David Ever. I'm here.
And who's with you?
Everett. I'm here. I'm on the road.
Thank y'all for being here tonight. And the last thing on to new business tonight, we'd ask, Mr. Buehler had asked if he could address the commission for a second. So we'll let him have the floor.
Just wanted to tell you all thank you. I am very humbled for y'all having the confidence in me, and I'm going to do the best job that I can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to come for the body? Commissioner Hall.
Commissioners, everybody in Wilson County. I just want to invite everybody out to Watertown this weekend. I'm going to hold this flyer up for the camera if they can see it. They're doing the Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe at Watertown High School Friday at 7:00 PM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, and then Sunday at 2:00 PM. So just want to invite everybody out there. Everybody likes the Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe. It's going to be a great show. Thank y'all.
Anything else to come for the body? One more motion. We are adjourned.